Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rizendes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Richmond.
Here.
Mayor Velazquez.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Here.
Councilmember Lenore.
Present.
City Manager Avra.
Present.
City Attorney Epperson.
Present.
Police Captain Reynoso.
Here.
And the record will show Police Chief Westrick is absent.
Thank you. Verification Agenda posting.
The amended agenda for the City of Hollister City Council Special Meeting of May 13th, 2019 was posted on the bulletin board on May 10th, 2019 at 10:16 a.m. per Government Code Section 54956.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you want to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session regarding the item agendized for closed session discussion. Mayor Velazquez recused himself from that closed session meeting. And in that closed session, Councilmember Lenore moved and Councilmember Spencer seconded that the city retained the legal services of Lauren Layne, L-A-Y-N-E, of the firm Baker, Manik and Jensen to assist the City of Hollister regarding the appeal to the City Council of the Planning Commission Decision Regarding Development of the 400 Block of San Benito Street. Said appeal to be heard on May 20th, 2019, and also to authorize the city manager to execute said legal services contract. Eye votes on that motion were from Councilmembers Lenore, Spencer, Rizendes, and Richmond. There were no nay votes cast, and the City Council recessed from closed session at 5:41 p.m.
Thank you. We're going to move to Item A1, Report on the Proposed Cannabis Ordinance Amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council and the public. My name is Maria, and I serve as the Cannabis Affairs Manager for the City of Hollister. Tonight, the City Council directed staff to hold a town hall meeting to discuss a few amendments to the cannabis ordinance, including, and most importantly, retail sales. On April 22nd, I came before the City Council and I gave a presentation sort of highlighting all the amendments to the ordinance. I have the PowerPoint. However, I wanted to just kind of go through a short timeline, just to kind of give everybody a background as to what has led us here tonight, so I thought it'd be helpful for everyone. Briefly, on December 19th of 2017, the medical cannabis ordinance was adopted by the City Council. February 20th of 2018, the City Council adopts amendments to the cannabis ordinance, including allowing businesses to engage in adult-use cannabis transactions with the exception of retail sales. In January 22nd of 2019, a public hearing was held to introduce amendments to the cannabis ordinance, including adult retail sales, and the City Council tabled this item for May 6th of 2019. During that time, or in between that and April 22nd, on March 14th, the city, including staff and members from other departments, put on a public forum to inform the community about local cannabis rules and regulations. During or at this forum, staff asked current business operators to come in and be part of our forum. So we had, it was held at the Vets Hall, and we had, I think, most of our current operators at that forum at that time. Attendance was probably, I want to say about 30 people, including staff. That went from around 1:00 in the afternoon to 4:00. And again, on April 22nd of 2019 is when I came before the City Council and I presented the PowerPoint that I have here. And then during that time, the City Council directed staff to bring back this item and hold another meeting. We didn't bring anything during the May 6th meeting because obviously we were asked to come back until then. We would have done it on the 22nd to prepare the ordinance for the first reading on the 6th, but that didn't happen. I think that pretty much summarizes everything. With that, staff recommends that the City Council open this item for public comment and provide staff with direction. Like I said, I have the PowerPoint. If it's the desire of the City Council, I can go through it again, or just in particular, if you guys want me to go through any of the items that we had previously discussed, I could do that, too.
I think if you can present what it is the changes are, so where everyone's clear on that, that would probably help for one.
For the benefit of the public also.
The public, exactly.
Okay. The first one is, the proposed change is to allow recreational or adult sales for cannabis. And what that entails is the removal of the word "medical" on retail sales. Like I explained, this has been removed already from all other licenses, including manufacturing, cultivation, distribution. And again, this is only for dispensaries. We currently don't allow recreational sales in Hollister. The next one is deliveries. What this would do is allow for non-storefront dispensaries, and the difference between this and a storefront dispensary is that this would be exclusively deliveries. I was, I wanted to sort of, kind of explain this one a little more. Last time, I think it wasn't clear that the deliveries would be bypassing taxes. However, this is another license that would be included in the ordinance, meaning that whoever operator is interested in applying for this would have to go through the same process, again, and come before the City Council, and it would, the taxes would apply the 5%. So it's the same as all the other licenses. It's not bypassing any of our already established rules. Like I said, deliveries from non-storefront dispensaries are not allowed. Currently, we only allow deliveries from storefront dispensaries, which we don't have any in Hollister. But it would allow for deliveries from other dispensaries from outside jurisdictions as well with the permit from the City of Hollister. The next one is the hours. Would be changing it from no deliveries between 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. to no deliveries between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And this is to, this is what the state has changed, so we're just trying to be a little more aligned with what the state already has. Not sure what happened. Okay. Yeah. Maybe it just wanted to blow it up. Yeah, sorry. This takes us back to deliveries. Like I said, the City of Hollister currently doesn't have anything that highlights the fact that outside deliveries have to have a regulatory permit approved by the City of Hollister. At the last meeting, we, or I was asked about the lawsuit against the state for the deliveries, considering that all, any deliveries can happen in the state. This is sort of to set boundaries and have a little more control of what comes into the city. So this is just, would just be more of a, like I said, a highlight to the ordinance in having to require all operators that come into Hollister to do deliveries to come before the City Council and get their license as well.
Can I ask you a quick question right there? On the outside deliveries, right now, they're coming in, they don't have a license to operate in the city. All, at that point, all these services would have to have a license to deliver in the city, and how are you going to force those that refuse to do that? And also, to that, those that sell, come in from out of town and sell in the city, are they going to be paying that, the local tax rate?
Correct. As far as enforcing it, I believe, and I hope with the help of the police department, we can do that. I mean, I'm pretty sure it's a challenge, but I'm sure it could be done since they've already, we've already kind of pinpointed a few that have happened. Maybe, I don't know, maybe Chris can talk about that more in detail.
Can you?
Mayor, with the current law that we have in California, the state's pretty much taken regulatory jurisdiction with the--
Could you use the mic, please?
The state's taken that away from us. They're allowing, if the person is legally registered anywhere in the state, they can deliver anywhere in the state. What I think with this is, is we're trying to get ahead of the ball, and with the lawsuit that's going on, hopefully, the state will come back in line with the plain language of the original adopted ordinances that will allow the local jurisdictions to regulate the deliveries. With this, this will allow us to be in front of it, so when, if that happens, we're already there. There's no leg time. We don't have to come back in front of the City Council and go through multiple readings while these people are still conducting these illegal deliveries.
So you're, this is basically a move to get ready for it, but it doesn't change what's happening right now?
No.
Okay.
So yes and no. Yes, it's to get in front of it. No, it doesn't change anything that we would be able to do legally right now.
But as you said, the idea is that--
Excuse me. The idea is that if we have companies delivering from out of town right now, part of the process would be, they would be coming to the City of Hollister, they would getting permission, just like a business license and a regulatory permit, to actually make deliveries. Now, if they get pulled over, if there's a sting, or there's some operations in which they don't have city licenses, then we would go, what we have in doing is sort of citing them on, well, what we did before. We would cite them for not having their business license and their regulatory permit here.
And can we still do that now? I mean, if it's a state deal now, are we not citing people for doing it, or what's--
As soon as that law came out, all of our delivery enforcement kind of came to a screeching halt until we figure out what's going on with the state.
Okay.
Until we get word back with this lawsuit, what's going on, I personally, I'm going to have to say that we're not going to be looking at deliveries, we're not going to be looking at delivery services at deliveries. We'll have to take the stance as those are being possession-for-sales cases, which instead of an admin way of taking about it, it would go in front of the DA's office, and they would have to make the final decision on whether they're going to file for that or not.
All right, thanks. Any other questions on that? Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Richmond has a question.
Thank you. And it's more for the city manager, I think, than anybody else. Did we ever send a letter to the folks that are suing the state, telling them we're in support?
The 25 or 27 communities that are actually still involved, and I'm not sure what the most recent status, do you guys have an update on that one?
No, I reached out, and I still haven't received any response.
Yeah, so it's essentially just trying to get, the state adopted two essential laws that are in conflict with each other, and I think what they're going to end up doing is trying to go back and let the local jurisdictions have the ability to regulate at the local level. I think there may be a compromise in that they're going to be allowed to, I mean, I don't know if you're going to be able to say no to deliveries, but there's nothing that's going to say that you can't regulate what the deliveries happen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next one is, we had also proposed to remove the point system. It is my understanding that the point system was established to sort of weed out the dispensary applications when, since it was a competitive process. Since the City Council already awarded the two dispensaries, and because we brought all of the applications anyway before the City Council, we didn't find any benefit into having a point system at all, so it's just cleaning up the ordinance. The next one is to--
Vice Mayor Richmond has a question.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to-- Point system. We have our two dispensaries now, so I agree, we don't need the point system now. But what would happen if one of them closed up, and then we had to go out and ask again for competitive? Would we have to go put the whole point system back in again?
No, I think what we have done, what we've decided to do in the event that we have, there's two potential cases. One is that one of the dispensaries is no longer doing business within the City of Hollister. The other case can be that the City Council at some point adjusts the number from two to three or four additionally. So I think, again, very similar to what we were planning on doing from the planning effort, is that we would be setting an application period, the applications would be coming in. Those operators would be making proposals to the council as to some of the things that they want, location, et cetera, and then you would have the ultimate selection again on actually who to do it. Again, when we went through the point system, it's very subjective, and I think basically what it would, what works better for us is us presenting you with the facts and how they tend to operate, where their businesses are located. If there's any additional funds, if there's anything that they're actually trying to do for the city or the community, then it would be up to you to approve those individuals.
Would that new process, which, by new process, I mean process without a point system, be codified in this regulation or some other regulation?
We would, we could always do it as, if the council adopts a new ordinance, or allows there to be an additional dispensary, that would have to be a part of the ordinance, and at that point, you can codify it as part of the ordinance once again, or just do it in another document with rules and regulations, or some other policy document that you folks put together.
I understand we're not making decisions. I just want to say, it would be my preference to have it available before something happened, not after, so that people who come in and say, "I want to apply," we're not doing that tonight. I understand that. We're going to report. So I'm not asking anybody to agree to it, but I'm just telling you for future reference that I would like to be, if we're going to dismantle the point system, I'd like to have the new system, whatever it is--
Be incorporated?
Sometime.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The following one is, we're requesting to add an expiration date to all applications, and that is 365 calendar days. This is to allow staff to be able to process applications and avoid applications being abandoned just for processing reasons. Currently, we don't have an expiration date for any of our applications. The only expiration would be for a conditional use permit that's issued, and it's left unactivated for a year, then it obviously expires. Sorry, cannabis use permit. Thanks. The following one is the live scans. We still require, obviously, that all live scans are cleared by the Hollister Police Department. This would just highlight the fact that before any applicant comes and submits a full-on application to our office, that they are fully cleared by the police department, to avoid any appeal process like we've had in the past. The last one in this slide is the residency requirement. The state, we currently have a 50% applicant and manager's resident of the state requirement. The state removed that. We found that it has also, at the beginning, it was a big deal. Currently, it's not. We want more transparency in our applications. Next one is distribution. The issuance of a distribution for a regulatory permit for distribution right now requires City Council approval, and most, if not all applicants required to have this for quality assurance. So we think that by having this done at staff level would eliminate a lot of time coming to the City Council and getting them approved, since most of them already, most applicants already get their, either their cultivation or their manufacturing license. This is just something that they need to sort of run their business as well, anyway.
So it goes in conjunction with their other permit, they also have that now.
Yeah, I think what we, I think what staff is looking for, when we bring a new regulatory permit, we can always ask, add the distribution license to it, because we're coming to you folks anyway. But what has happened is we've had several out there, and we want to just kind of be able to take care of those instead of bringing those back when they're ready to operate.
Okay.
Because you've already issued them a permit for doing one of the aspects of the business, and they have to have distribution to get their product to and from places.
The application fees. They're already established. This would just kind of add them to the ordinance. Phase one is the 1,500. Phase two is a 5,992. The regulatory permit renewal is the 5,992 as well. Any application amendments would cost half of what the regulatory permit cost. Like I explained last time, the, our amendments can go from very minimal to, for example, say, an applicant is adding up to 5,000 square feet of cultivation to their site, and it costs more for staff to review and make changes to the application so that be done or decided by the Development Services Director as to whether to charge the full amount, or if it's a simple amendment, it would obviously cost them nothing. So that's the amendment. The operators' fees for cultivation is still the $7 a square foot. We're requesting to add a nursery, $2 a square foot, instead of charging cultivation $7 a square foot for all cultivators, including nurseries. The dispensary, it's still 5% of gross sales, and the lab is also 5%.
So we can go back to the question about the nursery. We had that conversation about this, and what is a nursery? To what size? What height? Is it all in the same building? Is it shifting from one room to another? What was the outcome on that? What was the--
And again, this is, again, is a policy decision that the council can make. So the nursery example is basically any plant up to, what is it, about six weeks or so, eight weeks, prior to flowering, so they get transferred from a nursery to a flower room to mature. So we have companies that have expressed interest in being here, that are really just doing the clone part of it and aren't taking any of their plants to flower. I think you had a gentleman come one evening and, who had a similar request, is that, you know, his business model isn't, you know, going all the way to manufacturing and cultivation, or all the way to cultivation for the flower part of it. So again, it's just, is that something that the council wants to consider, reducing that because it's not necessarily, you're not getting the same dollar amount from the realm of how valuable the crop is when it's still at a relatively small size. And then the lab services, again, we had just a quick discussion about whether or not we charge a square footage of the lab area versus a gross sales on the lab area. Again, just to sort of make it, and I don't want to, please forgive me when it sounds like, just to make it easier on us, but one of the things I would say is that when you're monitoring people's gross sales, it's a lot more difficult for us to make sure that they're doing it correctly, rather than just saying, if you have a 2,000-square-foot lab, you're going to be paying X, and outside of that, we don't really care how much money you make or don't make. So, I mean, that's sort of it from our, we want to, we, when I say we, I mean staff, staff wants to try to make it as easy as possible on staff, so that there isn't an argument, or we go and spend money on trying to figure out auditors and whatnot, because that becomes, forensic auditing is pretty expensive, and we'd rather not try to get into that when we don't have to, so.
Vice Mayor Richmond.
Thank you. It's probably my ignorance, but I am confused on the fees, because I don't understand the trigger when you count. So, working down from the top, it's, cultivation is $7 a square foot. Does that, do we just go look at the space available and charge $7 a square foot, no matter how much product runs through that same space?
Correct. If the rooms are 2,000 square feet, like in a particular facility, that's obviously $14,000 a year for that particular--
Now I understand. And so the nursery would be the same?
Correct. If you're dealing with a 2,000-square-foot nursery, we would be charging $2 for that square foot.
Okay, so if someone has to move their product from a nursery to a cultivation, we're actually going to catch it on both sides, because they would need more cultivation room?
Yeah, we--
So when in the nursery room, we're at $2 a square foot, and they go to the cultivation process, it's $7 a square foot. Is that right?
Correct. We have a very similar facility that you're describing. If they have a room that's for their nursery, when it leaves their nursery and goes into a flower room, no matter what's going in that nursery, because it's going to be a nursery 365 days a year, flower rooms are going to be flower rooms 365 days a room. So the fee is just based on the square footage of the building.
Now, I got it. Now, on dispensary distribution, 5% of gross sales, I understand. What is a lab? I mean, it's a laboratory, but what, how does product move through the lab?
Should I? The testing is, all cultivation, all manufacturing facilities must bring their product to, their distributors must bring the product to the lab for testing, for quality assurance, for the state purposes. Just testing the product.
So they bring a sample? Obviously, you can't test everything. So break the sample to the laboratory. So if you say 5% of gross sales, which you, they're not really selling anything, they're selling their services?
Yes, it would be a 5% gross revenue.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. Thank you.
Again, going back, the only issue I'm having with all these is the nursery part of this. Making sure we clearly define what stage, is it six weeks, eight weeks, whatever it is, and not just kind of, okay, the last day, and we're, let's move it over here, and we'll squeeze them all in to the cultivation part at the higher rate, and we've got to this point at the lower rate. I mean, a clearly defined standard would be helpful.
Okay.
So we're all on the same page on that.
All right, moving on. I, this is additional information regarding the cannabis conditional use permits that have been approved. There's been 26 approved as of now. 20 regulatory permits have been issued. The City of Hollister has received 74, because I just got another application, and seven regulatory permits have been activated. These are the revenues here to date. And I had been asked about the projected revenue that the dispensary, dispensaries or dispensary would bring to the city, and I thought it'd be a good idea to bring it before the City Council first. The top one is with both, medical and adult use, and the one under is for medical only. The applicant also suggests, obviously, that with more sales, it would trigger or allow for more jobs, double the amount of jobs that would create in Hollister. Lastly, this is a map that shows where our facilities are and the zoning that allows for cannabis facilities. It can also be found on our website. It's an interactive map that people can actually zoom in and sort of navigate through it.
So I don't know if you can see it, but essentially, and for those folks that are in the audience, I don't know why she picked green, but green is available for cannabis. The blue is residential, and then if you see the sort of brown or orange, burnt orange circles, or those are, the radius is around sensitive uses, so around your schools, et cetera, will prohibit those things from going on there. If you look very, very closely, you can see the little purple dots that are on the, sort of the area, especially up by the industrial park, and those are the locations of where regulatory permits and applications have been filed. So if you can look, I know it doesn't come out real well, because there's so many of them in a lot of those places. So if there's any questions about the map, and like I said, if you do go to the internet, Maria did a pretty good job. It is pretty interactive, and you can get in and out of there pretty simple.
That concludes my report. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. A couple of questions. As far as delivery, even if they have an existing license right now, they need to go, everybody needs to go get a new one, is what you're saying? Or does the new, the one that they have now cover deliveries?
No, this would open up another application opportunity for our businesses that are already operating. And it cannot be a standalone delivery. It has to have a cultivation and manufacturing component. So they would have to come back and apply again and come before the city council. And the city council would have to approve it as well.
Okay. And I, I might be a little bit ignorant as to how many facilities we have. But I know we have two existing that want to open up for recreational or, I don't know how you want to say it, but that people can go in there and purchase. But how many of the other facilities do we have? And are they going to be allowed to delivery, to do deliveries as well?
Yes, this would give them the opportunity to apply for deliveries only. They cannot have a storefront dispensary.
Right. Again, I've got some questions as far as like the nursery flat rate as opposed to by the foot. How much of the building will now be nursery as opposed to cultivation? It sounds like you're going to come back with that.
Not all facilities have that component. Probably we have one or one specifically that it's all nursery. The other one is in the early stages of their cultivation. But we don't have many that have that component, from my knowledge.
A combination of both, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So what are, so again, like what are they currently operating at? And then how do we monitor, regulate, regulate that now?
It's all seven dollars.
Got it. Thank you.
And then I don't know if you were, when you took a tour of the facility, the staff puts together a map of the facility with various rooms to make sure that, I mean, we, obviously, through the building permit process, so we can identify what rooms are which. And then each one of them would have a specific dollar amount attached to them depending on what that room was being used for.
There's also at least probably a hundred cameras in the building, so.
There was. Lots of cameras.
Quick, another question I have for you. The, those that are existing dispensaries, are they going to have to get a license also for delivery? Or are they entitled to that?
They will, they'll have to get a license for deliveries as well.
Entitled to that as part of their.
Currently, they, they are already entitled to get it and go through the process. But the, the non-storefront deliveries is the one that we're trying to add to our ordinance.
Yeah, I just, I thought early on when we discussed it, those that were already here licensed, we're going to be able to do those deliveries. So that way, the people that we know are following all the rules and those things are the ones that are really leading the way in this, that are following all the rules.
Right. So currently, the dispensary has a, the dispensary license and they can also apply for a delivery license. They may choose not to. It's an option.
Okay.
Oh, so they don't have to?
It, it's not, I, I think what Maria is trying to say is it's not a by right.
Okay.
So they're not subjected to the, they're not subject to the regulatory permit if they have a storefront?
No, they are for delivery.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if, so if, our two, our dis, our two dispensaries, they can open up and, and they're regulated, they're regulated as a dispensary. But if they wanted to deliver, they would have to get that as well.
Okay, so they have to get it too?
Aside from the two, how many other do we have? I might have missed that.
Only two dispensaries.
Aside from the two retail or dispensaries, how many other do we have operating within city limits that can or cannot apply for the delivery?
Probably right now, seven.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay.
There's two locations. Within those two locations, there's a total of seven regulatory permits that have been activated.
All right. All right. So this time, what we're going to do is open it to the public to, if you have questions or comments, you can fill out a speaker card and we will go through that process with everyone.
Mayor Velazquez, at this time, I have seven speakers. Do you want me to call them up a couple at a time and have them lined up and ready to go or?
Yeah, two at a time would be great.
Okay, two at a time. Okay. For the report on the proposed cannabis ordinance amendment and proposed changes to the cannabis rules and regulations, I have seven speaker cards. The first two speakers will be Lana Lewis Blodgett and then next up will be Jim Whitehead.
Good evening, council and staff and fellow interested parties. I'm Lana Lewis Blodgett and my other better half is my husband, Robert. We are MBAM, Monterey Bay Alternative Medicine. And we are opening a dispensary here in Hollister. I'm happy to say so. We're here tonight because of the changes in the ordinance and specifically the one that relates to adult use. We have two other operational dispensaries in Monterey County. And I thought what would really be interesting for you to hear are the statistics that have come forth with the changeover from medical cannabis to adult use cannabis. Our dispensary in Salinas called Emerald Skyway currently, and this is as of today, served twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven adult use patients. For one year. Versus medical of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three, which is basically about five percent. And our dispensary in Del Rayoaks, which is also MBAM, served three thousand, eight hundred.
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six customers versus two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine medical, which is around seven percent of the total. So I hope that these numbers will help you in some way make that decision of how important it is for any business to be viable, that we do have to include adult use. And I would also say to you, if you would like to ask us questions at this time, we would be more than happy to answer as best we can.
When are you going to open? This has been going on for a while, so I'm curious.
Well, we're at that stage now. We just, we're processing the asbestos testing because we, as you know, we had to tear the house down instead of remodel or rebuild. But all of the building plans are intact and on their way and ready to go as well as designs that we've worked with your staff. And we're as anxious as you are.
Yeah, if I, if I may, just for your.
Please.
Do you have any time left?
Pardon?
No, it's all right. I didn't want to take your time. No, so just for the council's edification. So Monterey Bay is located very, very close to Bacloski at San Felipe. There's an old house, there used to be an old mechanic spot there. So the house is being demoed. A new building got approved by the planning commission. There's a new site in architectural, so it'll be a brand new facility that's kind of in, in the more northern part of that particular property. The goal was to try to get it as far away from the existing residences that are on Kirkpatrick, I think, if somebody could help me out there. So that's kind of why we moved stuff around a little bit. So I, I think that they've done everything that they're supposed to do up until this point. I know it's been a while, but it takes a while to get through CEQ and a lot of the other things, so.
It does.
Essentially, they're going to be retail, then our friends out on Felton are going to be retail as well?
They, they will be, they will be a retail dispensary. And then I, I missed the last part.
The one that we toured out in Felton?
On Shelton, yeah. So those are the two. So you have that one and then you have the other one on Shelton.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You haven't, those are three minutes coming if you want to use it.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jim Whitehead. I'm in District One. I'm opposed to allowing recreational marijuana to be sold within our city limits. I'm very concerned about this issue. And I know that you're talking about a number of different things here. But I'm concerned about the safety of our residents, as I hope you are. Most cities, most municipalities in the state do not allow the sale of recreational marijuana and for good reason. I was reading a report by the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, on marijuana and public health. And they indicated that thirty-eight percent of high school students report having used marijuana in their life. Says, "Research shows that marijuana use can have permanent effects on developing brains when use begins in adolescence. Frequent or long-term marijuana use is linked to school dropout and lower educational achievement." Now, we're not talking about selling recreational marijuana to youth, but to adults. But we all know that youth can get it and have gotten it and do get it and do use it. And it's a tragedy. They indicate that marijuana in the teen brain, the brain's not fully developed until the mid twenties. Negative effects include difficulty thinking and problem solving, problems with memory and learning, impaired coordination, difficulty in maintaining attention. And they note the negative effects on social and school life. Decline in school performance, increased risk of mental health problems, impaired driving and potential for addiction. I trust that you'll give serious thought to the issues before you. But I do not believe that it is of any benefit to this community to have the sales of adult use or recreational marijuana in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, may I?
Yes, Council, Vice Mayor.
I thank you for your input. I, I want you to know, I want you to know that I do agree with you on all, all you say the problems are. I don't think that's debatable. I know there are some people want to debate it. I don't want to debate it because we know that your brain's not fully formed till you're twenty-five. But I would like, just like to hear your, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just want to hear your explanation. We did have an election. This was widely publicized. By the way, there were a lot of votes on this proposition. It was, did not sneak in under the wire. It was the second most voted proposition of the seventeen propositions that were available on that election. And it, and, and the adults only voted fifty-seven percent. And I don't think they're always right a hundred times, a hundred percent of the time. But, and I pledged personally to, to do my best to arrange it so that if we did have recreational sales, that we would be able to prevent young people from getting it and, and to detect when that happened. Do you see any possibility that you can come up with a way that, that people who are adults who did vote for it could, could enjoy that? If they enjoy it, I wouldn't, but if they enjoy it, just like they enjoy alcohol, tobacco and a lot of driving motorcycles, I pointed out, a lot of things that aren't good for them, without just having a ban on it? Have you ever thought that through? I just, I'm just curious. I don't, and this is not a debate, I'm really interested in it.
No, I appreciate that. I don't know the process now whereby youth obtain marijuana. I don't have that information at hand. But I know that it does happen. And the more that it's available in the community and in the population, the more it's going to get to the youth. I wish I had a solution, you know, to keep that from happening. To see the, the negative effects on, on young people in this community or any community, it's terrible. We have an obligation, I think, to do all we can. I understand that, you know, people voted for Prop sixty-four but also did not require that we allow sales of recreational marijuana. Said we may. And I hope that we may not. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quentin Wright and Sue Whitehead.
Mayor, council members, thanks for the time. My name is Quentin Wright, up here in Hollister. I think a couple of issues that I have, one being with this proposed change from seven dollars per square foot to two dollars per square foot, I feel like that could be an issue. I don't know, was there, the reason for the change being that nurseries don't produce a profit? And so therefore, they don't need to be taxed to the same level?
Essentially.
Okay. I think my recommendation would be to keep that the same. And then similar to what was said before with Prop sixty-four, the verbiage is there for us as a community to set forth our own guidelines. And I would just ask that we use caution about the message that we send to the younger generation when we, we create these new regulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Whitehead, District One. And I am against recreational marijuana. One of the reasons is, for three years, we debated medical. We all knew it was going to come to this, but it wasn't upfront. Talking about children, and my concern is, I mean, adults, yes, if they want to, they're getting it anyway now. But I'm worried about children, what's happening in the high school, the number of children that are not achieving now, and we know they are getting it. And in response to a rash of cases where children are taken to hospital and emergency rooms after consuming marijuana, sometimes with psychotic symptoms, lawmakers prohibited potlaced candy bars and other products that look like candy. They banned advertising to minors, limited THC in edibles. But the issue goes much further as new products come out that hide marijuana use, such as spray bottles that look like asthma inhalers and e-cigarettes that look like nicotine vaporizers. How's anyone going to control that if we have recreational marijuana? How are we going to know exactly what they're producing and how they're producing it? So I would ask that we put children's health and safety first. We have children and grandchildren. I mean, it, it must worry you. And as far as the dispenser is delivering, it's going to put a huge, huge additional pressure on the police. I don't think they can police all, all that. I mean, when I see the number that's coming in that started, we were going to have one and it was going to be two to make it fair, now look at it. So our, our children and our young people need to be protected. And this is where you come in. If it's allowed, this is your legacy. And you'll be held responsible. And I would ask that we take into consideration the youth and the children. Because we're not going to be able to stop them getting it, they're getting it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Salvador Mora and Tim Solomon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Regarding, in regards to allowing adult use cannabis sales in Hollister, the constituents of the city have made it perfectly clear how they feel about this. Although they voted to approve the, the selling of recreational cannabis in the state and not specifically Hollister, the results support allowing the selling of recreational cannabis. The city has done its due diligence, is doing this, has done its due diligence to make sure the process and policies are in. the process and policies are in place to sell the adult, to sell adult-use cannabis. Constituents of the city did not just give their opinions on the matter solely on social media, they expressed themselves the best possible way. They voted on it. That's the opinion the mayor and city council should take into account when voting whether or not to allow adult, adult-use cannabis in Hollister. Although you may not personally agree with the use or sales in Hollister, the people have spoken. We shouldn't do this solely for revenue, but do it because that's what the voters wanted. Now, I understand that there's concerns that the youth are going to somehow suffer. The youth currently cannot consume or purchase alcohol legally, yet it's done. They cannot purchase cigarettes, they somehow get them. They cannot purchase marijuana legally, they somehow get it. Now, it's not to say that we should just get it done because they get their hands on it, but the people have spoken in this state, and we do have the opportunity to allow this. Now, some of the benefit is tax revenue, more funds to our general fund that we can use. That's not the only reason we should do it. We should do it because the people have spoken, they voted on it, just didn't give their opinion. Now, I understand that, you know, we should take the young people, you know, in mind when it comes to things, but a person's brain, it's been researched that a person, individual's brain is not fully developed to the age of twenty-four, yet we allow them to purchase cigarettes, we allow them to purchase and consume alcohol legally. There are a lot of good benefits to using marijuana or cannabis. We shouldn't exclude that and focus, and not just focus solely on the negative aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name's Tim Solomon. First, I want to start out saying I second everything that Jim Whitehead said. I appreciate what he said. And there's a lot of thoughts I have on my mind about this, and I'll just be upfront with it. I was a teenager during the sixties and seventies, and there was a time my life was wrapped around marijuana. I was growing it, selling it, thought it was the greatest thing there was. But over a period of time, I saw the damage that it caused. It changes people's thinking, their behavior, and it's essentially an unknown drug, regardless what people say. It's an unknown drug, so there's a lot of areas where it affects people in a negative way. So I got out of it, but my friends, or many of my friends who didn't get out of it, went on, had serious problems in their life, and to ask, to answer Mr. Richman's question, the children of these people that I was friends with, almost a hundred percent use marijuana. And because they were in an atmosphere where the adults in the home were using marijuana and promoted it, and thought it was a good thing, they started, in the high school years of age, using marijuana. So I've seen the damage done. So after what I've been through, I spent my adult life fighting to protect my children from the harms of marijuana, and fortunately, I was successful. Now, I'm fighting to protect my grandchildren, and what really upsets me is when I see that when we're talking about children and protecting people in society, a big part of the debate is money, as if that tips the scale in favor, when on the other side is the health and the welfare of our children and our grandchildren. Now, I don't have a degree, I don't have all the facts, I've just been through it personally, and I've seen all this for many, many decades, and I'm convinced from what I've seen that it's harm to society.
Thank you very much, though.
Thank you very much.
Carl Sailing and Steve Becerra.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Carl Sailing. I'm CEO of Hollister Cannabis Co., Hollister resident, first active cannabis company here in Hollister. I want to thank the City Council and the mayor for touring our facilities. We are very proud of what we have accomplished, and we look forward to being a model cannabis company for this industry. I do want to clarify something about adding non-front, non-storefront dispensary or the delivery license to the regulations. You know, we would not take our products and directly deliver them to people, bypassing, you know, the cannabis taxes. Basically, we would, you know, sell our products to our delivery company, as well as purchase other products from distributors, because we would need to have a full suite of products to offer to the consumers. And then we would pay the tax at each level, you know, so we pay the manufacturing tax for the products that we make, and then we would pay the delivery tax for the products that we deliver, regardless if we made them or not. So my first business in the cannabis industry was actually a delivery service in San Diego that was very successful. So we have the experience and the technology to really build an amazing delivery service. So this will provide our company with, you know, not only an opportunity to deliver to the Hollister residents, but expand that footprint to other cities, increasing our revenue, and then ultimately, the revenue back to Hollister. Hollister also has the comfort of knowing that a vetted delivery service is actually making the deliveries there, you know, not a different company. Now, adult use is already here in Hollister, whether or not you guys pass it for the dispensaries. I can call up on my phone a delivery service that's legal, and have cannabis delivered probably here in about thirty minutes or so, regardless of what you guys do. So it's already here, let's put some regulations in place so the Hollister residents can rest assured that it's a vetted company. You know, it's not some random company that's going to be bringing cannabis there. Also, you know, I do ask that you, when you do approve delivery, that it's only for the existing licensed cannabis companies here. Another quick little topic, I'm a lifelong cannabis user. By anyone's means or measurement, I've been highly successful. My kids both use cannabis. My younger son uses it for Crohn's disease. My older son uses it recreationally. He's graduating this year with a four-point-oh from UCLA. So everybody's got their stories on either side. Also, I'm available for any questions at any time about the industry or anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Becerra, and I live in District Four. I have some comments in relation to changing the rules to allow non-dis dispensaries to dispense and deliver marijuana products. For clarity, I'm talking about cultivators and marijuana manufacturing businesses, which are those who produce marijuana vape pens, food products, juices, oils, tinctures, candies, and too many other products that list in my three minutes. Just for the record, I have been involved as a citizen, providing my input on this subject since the first public meeting in 2016, when a previous council was a couple of meetings away from opening all aspects of commercial marijuana businesses in every zoning district in this city. Changes before you tonight regarding cultivators and manufacturers being allowed to deliver their own products, instead, as the ordinance clearly outlined, left that to the two marijuana dispensaries that were approved to operate over a year and five months ago. If these businesses wanted to dispense, then they should have applied for dispensary licenses when the ordinance was first adopted. Cultivators and manufacturers should cultivate and manufacture, and not dispense and deliver. You should not allow regulatory permit holders to apply for and be granted a retail, non-storefront license for deliveries. This would dangerously increase the number of those driving and delivering marijuana, and would strain police oversight, and tax an already-stretched police department and code enforcement. And don't allow cultivators to skirt the seven dollars a square foot operational fee by allowing them to become dual nursery operators, and only pay two dollars a square foot for a portion of the operation. Either you're a cultivator paying seven dollars, or you're a nursery paying two dollars. This is just another attempt to pay less to you and deny the city income. I ask that you don't participate in chasing taxation of this industry down to the lowest possible denominator. I am also not thrilled with the prospect of allowing recreational marijuana to be sold within our city. I've always been an advocate for local access of medical marijuana. If you took the time to do the research, it was a contentious debate, but ultimately, a detailed and fair medical marijuana ordinance was hammered out and approved. I highlight the word "medical" because if you go back and read the articles and watch the videos, the debate and conversations by the industry advocates, we heard nothing about recreational sales, only words like compassion and local medical access. It has always been about recreational marijuana for most of the industry, that's where they believe the money is. And for those who say, "Follow the will of people," I agree. Prop 64 passed by fifty-seven percent here in this county, allowing this to occur, but as far as the commercial aspect of Prop 64, it does not say "shall," like the personal aspect does. It says, "With permission, may, with permission from you and the state." Part of your responsibility is to manage and adopt policy to keep our citizens safe and decide what businesses are good for our community. The majority of cities and counties within the state of California do not allow recreational sales to occur. In fact, only eighty-five of four-hundred-and-eighty-two cities in the state allow that. Just because the industry has no regard for our quality of life, I think it is important, and so should you. And it is, in fact, it is time to move forward. Listen, decide, and vote. And do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Steve, did you stay there, please?
Sure.
Steve, you and I have had many conversations in this. I happen to agree with you on several of your points, especially about the delivery. I'm very concerned that to have distributors or wholesalers deliver. I also happen to agree with you that the original term "medical cannabis" was put in to get a wedge in the door. But realistically, I also believe that when people voted on Prop 64, they knew what they were voting for. I'm just giving you my personal opinion. They knew what they were voting for. When they said could approve it, they meant they wanted it. That's what they wanted. I took the obligation to try to make it as safe as possible, within reason, and I think we've, I think this council, despite of many times, I don't think the council does a good job on things. You've all heard me talk about that. I think this council has done a really good job on that, whether you agree with where we're going or not. I don't know where we're going, no one's promised me any votes, but we've done a really good job. We took our time, we made a lot of requirements that we laid on, and as far as making the money goes, I could care less for the money. I, that's why I'm going to propose how to use it to basically put themselves out of business, just like the cigarette money did, okay? I'm not doing it for income, I can assure you, for the city. I don't use it myself, never have, didn't use it medically, I've never used it recreationally. I'm not a reformer, but I just don't use it. So it's not personal with me, I just want you to know that I'm taking all these things into consideration, and I appreciate the discussions we've had at a long, long time on many subjects. Thank you very much.
I'm not sure there was a question there, but I want to let you know that I, Mr. Richman, I appreciate your transparency. I read the feed today on social media. I agree with you, we've had so many talks in the past, you've always been upfront with me. I knew exactly where you stood all the time. All I would say that, you know, I just hope that we find a different way, or we, you guys just believe that this may not be right for our community. It doesn't have to be. Like I said, "may," not "shall." "Shall" says, "I could have an ounce of marijuana in my pocket, and smoke it in my house all I want, and I could grow my six plants." That's "shall," but "may" says, "with your permission, and with the state's permission." And by the way, look forward, AB, I'm not even sure, there's an assembly bill coming down, that if it passes, it's going to dictate, it's going to, again, strip you of your ability to govern, and it's going to say that you have to allow one dispensary for every four liquor licenses, or in our, in small communities like ours, one dispensary for every ten thousand citizens. So the state is ripping away at your ability to govern our local community, so beware.
I will oppose. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moshi Starid and Cam Arrington.
Hello, good night, everybody. First of all, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to come into the city and give us the opportunity to show you what we can do, that now that everybody visited our facility on Shelton, I hope it demonstrates that we're serious, that we're responsible, and that we know what we're doing. I also want to comment and acknowledge that the fact that cannabis really hurts in young people's mind is absolutely correct, and I think the right and the ability to go from medical to adult use actually provides more control, because medical allows eighteen years of age to purchase cannabis versus twenty-one for adult use. So I think adult use provides more control and offers more responsibility from us and from the city here, to control the use of who's using it, and also control the quality and the type of merchandise that is going to be sold for customers. It's also very sad that young kids are able to get this, and this is unfortunate, that they're able to get a hold of cannabis illegally, and it's a sad fact. And it's also a challenge that anybody can come into the city here and bring a delivery of cannabis to anyone within half an hour, just like Carl said. And that's a very, very tough competition to have, and a tough issue to deal with. At least if we're getting cannabis, adult cannabis use here, at least you know where the product is coming from, and you know that it's being monitored and controlled completely transparent, and being used in a very, very responsible way. So I hope that you take all these things in consideration, and because it's, you know, the pendulum already passed, the critical mass has already passed, and state-approved adult use, and if indeed we're going to allow dispensaries here, I hope it's going to start as adult use and not medical, because just like the first couple demonstrated, if we open as medical, we're going to be probably receiving very, very few customers, and if we're about to prove to you that we know how to manage and how to run a facility, this would be a very sad demonstration that we won't be able to show you indeed how we do it in, as adult use.
Thank you. So I do have questions for you, and I appreciate the tour you gave, I believe all of us took the tour, and it is a very professional facility. It's part of what we strive to make sure was going to happen here. So I have a few questions, though. You mentioned the eighteen-year-olds now can get it with the medical?
Medical, correct.
So what will happen if this is approved as recreational? Can an eighteen-year-old still come in and get it as medical, or would that not be the case in law?
No, they're not allowed. So the challenge with medical right now, if it's only medical, you need to get a certificate or license from a doctor locally and statewide. It costs about four to five hundred bucks altogether, and nobody in their right mind in reality will have to, will go through spending this time and effort just to get a certificate where they can pick up the phone and call for delivery. So nobody really will go through the effort to get a medical license if they can get a delivery at no cost.
An eighteen-year-old might, so.
Yeah, eighteen years old.
Again, just so I'm clear on this, no one under twenty-one will be allowed into your facility?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct, yes.
The other question I have for you is the same question asked to the other owners, when is your operation going to? when is your operation going to open, your dispensary?
So we are weeks away, maybe two to three weeks away, from opening. And I'd like to add something, if I may. Because we have to stock the facility with large sums of dollar amount of produce, which has an expiration date. If we're going to medical, most likely, we're going to be receiving very, very few people. Most people that will show up will have to send home because they wouldn't know the difference. They would show up, we have to send them home. And the end result would be that we're going to have very, very little action. And most likely, the product will have to expire. So we're going to be sitting on a lot of product that will be expiring very, very quickly.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do.
Councilmember Sanders, and then Councilwoman.
Okay.
So if you're allowed to do deliveries, are you going to be allowed to deliver to 18-year-olds as long as it's medical here in Hollister?
No. No. We, I hope we demonstrated that we're very, very responsible. We try to adhere to the laws and to make, uphold the law and make sure that we're operating 100% to the law or beyond. If you visited the facility, we could have cut corners, and we demonstrated that we go all the way we do. Actually, I doubled the budget from the original budget from, so we want to make sure that, by the way, today we received our annual license today. We had a visit from the state a couple days ago, and they just approved our annual, so...
Okay. Councilmember Sanders.
Just for clarification, somebody wants it delivered to their home. Do they call you on the phone? They make an electronic transaction for payment?
So I'm not really versed with deliveries yet. We need to sort all this out, but...
I'm assuming somebody's going to ask for ID on the other end.
Of course, of course. So ID and the transaction has to be transparent, has to be legal, and...
Would it be somebody that's maybe already in your database, or that you can reflect back to, or is this, do you show the ID when you deliver it?
I'm not sure, but ask the question again.
I want to know, do you have a database that keeps track of your customers?
So this is a new...
It would be a new venture.
This is new venture, so we have no customer base.
There's not any user information.
Correct.
For lack of a better word.
Correct.
But mostly, I'm concerned that we don't deliver to minors.
I'm as concerned as you are.
Well, we got to make sure that doesn't happen.
So we'll do whatever it takes to make sure that minors are not being served 100%. So we need to figure out the, you know, the manner to make sure that this is all on the up and up.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, Cam Arrington. Thank you. So I have a few observations. One is the use of the word "responsible" in this industry. And the moment that they made cannabis-laced candy, you have to throw "responsible" out the window. That's devious. There's method behind that that is, that is purely money-driven, and it's designed to addict the future generation, okay? So that's one observation. Second is sometimes there are unintended consequences, and we as adults vote on things, and you know, the majority of us think this is this great thing. But the reality is, is that those that are, that are subject to what we as adults voted on take the brunt of what happens. And let me just give you an example. I was talking to a pediatric provider here in Hollister, so this is, this is local, caring for your kids and your grandkids. She said, "Since marijuana was legalized, the rising generation has more access, and they think that because it's fine for adults, it's fine for them, and they're using it more." She's had dozens of kids have psychotic breakdowns, three, one of which was in a coma for several weeks, and the other two are permanently altered. These are three of our children here in this community that now have chronic mental illness, permanently altered. Is it worth it? She asked her teenagers, "What are your plans after high school?" And before Prop 64 passed, she said 10 to 20% had no ambition, no plan beyond high school. The other 80 to 90% had some plan for job, or technical skill, or college, whatever. They had motivation, they had to drive, they had a goal. And now, she said, over 50% have no drive, no ambition, and the common denominator between those two groups, the 10 to 20 before and the 50 now, is marijuana use. We as adults have voted, right? But we have not protected our children. And so the question is, will you take the opportunity to protect your children and grandchildren, or will you rue the day that you allowed this expansion of marijuana to our community, which will expand to our children even more than what it has? And if it affects you, your children, your family, will you say that my vote was for the correct?
Thank you. Do you have a question? Councilmember Spencer?
Hi.
Yes.
Whoever gave you those figures at 50%, our graduating rate is very high at the high school. Over 85% of our senior class will go on to college.
Okay.
Or at trade school.
I'm just telling you anecdotally what she said. She is a pediatric provider. I wish she were here to say it herself. I was, I was doing physical exams for the Boy Scouts on Saturday, and I said, "What's happened with the introduction of marijuana and the acceptance of Prop 64?" And she said, "It's devastating, and we're going to see it. We will see it."
And I'm, you have your opinion, but like I said, and I just said, I work at the high school, I know what the graduation rate is, and I know what the percentages of our students at San Bernardino High School that are going on to either a CT, a CTE, or a four-year college, or a two-year college, and it's over 85%.
Be interesting to see what it does over the next few years.
Yeah.
Because according to what she's seeing with 14, 15, 16-year-olds, they are now no ambition because they're smoking pot or using cannabis in some form or another on a daily basis. This is in our community. And I tell you her name, except she didn't give me permission to do that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Richmond has a question?
Oh, sure.
Thank you, thank you. I know, again, we're not arguing, I just want to point something out. Now, you know, I'm probably older than most people in this room, so I've lived through a lot of different generations of people abusing a lot of stuff, okay? One time, alcohol was one of the big time abuse items. When I grew up, everybody smoked. The rate of smoking here in California has dived enormously. Nicotine is one of the most addictive chemicals there is. Everybody knows that. I wonder if you think that the programs designed to keep people off nicotine, or keep them off cannabis, have effect?
Well...
Whether those programs have some impact, or don't have any impact?
Certainly, we've seen, we've seen a positive, positive effect from nicotine. But it's interesting, the industry lied, flat-out lied, about the effect of cigarette smoke and nicotine for decades, right? And we all know that.
That's right.
It went through, it went through the, it went through the courts, and it went through congressional hearings and all sorts of stuff, and right? They bold-faced lied about it. We don't have enough data about cannabis, in my opinion, to know really what it does. At this point, we have anecdotal data, and this comes from a local provider that says this is what she's seeing.
Well, I wasn't talking about that in particular. I was talking about cessation and prevention programs.
I...
That, would it make any difference to you? I'm not trying to bribe you.
Sure, sure, sure.
Would it make any difference to you if I proposed that we used 50% of the money right off the bat for sensation programs and education programs and recovery programs?
I think it's easier to prevent, but I think that if we're going to let it through the door, we've got to, we've got to do something to protect the children and grandchildren. The rising generation's going to be a mess if they get the message that cannabis is okay for adults, no big deal. In fact, I've heard the industry say, "It's great," right? It treats so many things. And I think there may be medicinal benefits to it, but it's not well-studied, and it's skirted the FDA, and it's made it so that it's almost impossible to ever really figure out what it does, how it helps people, dosages, purity, strains. I mean, there's so many things that are unknown. And to hear that she's dealing with kids that are now permanently impaired, emotionally scarred from use of marijuana, one is too many.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other speakers? Yes, we do.
My next two speakers are April Fulton and Barbara Saunders.
Hello, I'm April Fulton, and I'd like to urge you to vote no. We should not have recreational marijuana in our neighborhoods. Just because we can doesn't mean we should. Children are consuming vape pens at an alarming rate. If you go to the high school, you will see them everywhere. The high school my son attends, they have signs in the bathroom that ask, "Why are you peeing in the vape room?" They're smoking the marijuana pins in those rooms. It's not okay. And if we vote yes, we're telling our children that it is okay. I work for a school district. This year, we've had a middle schooler bring marijuana to school. Then we had middle schoolers bring vape pens to school. By voting yes, we're telling them that it's okay. The children are our future. We need to protect them. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Saunders. I have four children, 12 grandchildren. My mother was a drug addict. She didn't know it. She took prescription drugs of all sorts until the doctor discontinued them when she was about to die. She smoked, and she drank, and it was pretty rough, and she didn't know she had a problem. In my generation, which is the one I was in junior high, high school, and college during the 60s, I saw a lot of different things happen. As a result, I have three dead cousins. I saw my ex-husband go to jail. I saw two of my sons go to jail. One of them straightened out. The others are kind of living in la-la land. My ex-husband now has the basic emotional status of a four-year-old. He's 75. And I don't begrudge anyone any kind of pain or suffering relief. But just like recreational drinking causes an awful lot of accidents in the road, eventually, if you do it enough, you might get cirrhosis of the liver or ulcers. And I think people should realize they're very fortunate to be alive on this earth, that other people love them and care about them, and they should take really good care of themselves, so their families can have them for a long time here. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk with you today. I'm here as a mom, a mom of three boys, and a advocate for children. I have been teaching children for a lot of years, and I've worked with kids, starting at age one up through 18. I've been doing the musicals at the high school for past, over past 15 years. I've worked with a lot of high school kids, and I love them. They're amazing people. And I know honor's not in their head. They're amazing people, but they're not adults. They don't know what we know. They do not have our life experience. That's why they have parents. That's why they have teachers. That's why they have mentors, to help them make good choices. If we allow recreational marijuana to be dispensed in our town, in our county, we are telling them it's okay. I don't care if it's, they have to be 21. I have watched a lot of 21-year-olds get alcohol for underage kids for years, and it angers me, having a grandfather who was not a kind alcoholic, and it has affected my family. I've watched alcoholism affect my family. I've watched drug use affect my family. My sister has MS. She takes marijuana for her pain. I'm not talking medicinal marijuana. I'm talking recreational marijuana. I asked my son, who has friends in this room, so I know it's probably going to get back to him, but I asked him, "What is your guess about the kids, your friends, people you know at the high school that smoke, smoke pot, or who on a regular basis or not on a regular basis?" His guess was 40%. 35 to 40% of high school kids at our high school right now have tried it or smoke it on a regular basis. His guess for regular basis, between 15 to 20%. Now, let me tell you where he got that from. Based on talking about it, his friends just telling him, based on seeing them high at school and school functions and outside functions, outside of school, their posts, their snaps, of getting high, and just plain having offered to them, offered to join them. You know, it is a problem. It is here. Please say no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josh Ulrich, and I'd like to also speak as a father of teenage boys, and I've also worked with the youth quite a bit through my church program and been around them a lot. I have a little bit of context in this, in that I grew up in Alaska, where basically marijuana was very prevalent. My neighbor had like a kilo in his closet. I saw abuse of it all around me, including my older brothers. I also can verify with what Dr. Arrington said about firsthand the effects of marijuana on those, especially the youth that take it, in that I saw a lot of these people that took marijuana, that smoked it often, they lost ambition, they became largely dysfunctional in society, and a lot of them ended up in prison, or dead, or, you know, not doing well in life. So I've seen that firsthand in my life, in my youth. And as it's been spoken of here, recreational marijuana, in passing this, we're saying that, as Amy said, that we support that, even though maybe the vote came and there was a majority that said that. We, as a county, as an organization, as leaders, as fathers, as mothers, whoever we are, we have an opportunity here to say, "No, we don't want that. We don't want our youth exposed to that." And it appears from what I've seen and read also that there's a push for the recreational side, largely due to the medicinal side not making as much money. And so the recreational is seen as an opportunity to, you know, an avenue to make more money for the local businesses that are vested in that particular venture. And I guess the question that I would say is, "At what cost?" So please do not vote this through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sal Palma and Kayan Ang.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You know, in listening to all the opponents of adult use that have come forth this evening, you know, I think there was a common concern across the board, and that was of cannabis getting into the hands of the youth, which I think is a very valid concern. And I oppose that just as much as any of them. The thing is, they're, and like most of them said, they're already currently getting it. It's already there. And they're not getting it from legal dispensaries. They're not getting it from the legal market. They're getting it from the place they've gotten it from since prior to 2018. They're getting it from the black market. I don't think there's anybody in here that would argue with the fact that nothing allows the black market to proliferate like prohibition and restricting access of the legal market. So in effect, by disallowing adult use, the city's really propping up the black market and allowing those black market drug dealers, you know, the clientele base of both adult use and the youth. I think that if we were to pass adult use in the city, it would obviously take a major revenue stream from those black market drug dealers and probably make it not worth their while to continue to doing what they're doing simply to sell to those kids in high school. As far as the 21 and over for medicinal use, I think by passing adult use, that wouldn't automatically make it so the 18 and over couldn't come in for medical purposes. I would not be against the city taking that action independently at all and raising the medical age from 18 to 21. I think you'd probably have to consult with the city attorney to see whether you would be able to override Prop 64 and that. But 18, 19, and 20-year-olds are not our market, whether they're on the medical side or not. So I would have no problem in raising that age on the medical side citywide to the 21. You know, it's been said many, many times that it was a bait and switch. Adult use was always the end goal. You know, the bottom line is, the city passed its ordinance, I think in December of 2016. Adult use was passed at the 11th hour of that November of 2016. So it wasn't a debatable point up to the point when the ordinance was passed. As far as the age verification for deliveries, it is duly verified via electronic transmission when the order is placed, and then when the delivery driver would show up, they would verify that that same ID is in possession of the individual and that individual is actually the person on the ID. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Governor Mayor, city council members. My name is Ken Ong. I'm a father of two children. I'm not very eloquent in speaking, but I just want to let you know my concerns by listening to all the speakers. So far, it seems like this recreational marijuana is a very lucrative business, and that worries me as a father. I always wanted the best for my children and look out for the benefit. Although I know the vote has been passed that majority was adult, and this is meant for adults, but with the influx of easily available to get recreational marijuana, even though we so far talk about youth that's getting it illegally or somehow they can get it, but even though if my, I know my kids, they're good kids, if they didn't get it, but someone in my neighborhood who smokes, they affect them. They cannot go out and play because of, you know, someone in my neighbor is smoking pots, and that affects their health and they're restricting their freedom to go out to play. So that's my concern that, and also if we allow more and more of this to be easily available in the city, even though for adults, it may not be, how should I say? Well, what I want to say is that those that are not intentionally go out to get, they might be affected by those who consume it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jared Fulton and Joshua Ong?
Thanks for letting us come and speak about this issue. I vote no, or hope you guys would. Couple things. Previous spoken gentleman said it costs hundreds of dollars for someone to go down and get a medical marijuana license or card. Not true. You can go San Jose, $50, walk in the room, "Oh, my elbow hurts." No, look at it, flop it, boom, here you go. So you are now a medical marijuana patient. Two, the black market issue so-called, if, where are the kids getting the edibles from? The candy bars, the oils. Your black market street dealer usually don't have edibles. So where are our kids getting that from? And three, for the captain of the police, are you guys prepared? Do you have enough power to combat the issues that are gonna come up? The driving under influence, the crashes, the theft, the robberies of the deliveries, which do happen? Can you guys handle those issues? That's a good one, huh? Because it's coming. I mean, you bring in dispensaries and people driving around with marijuana in their car, people are gonna try to take it. And it's gonna bring guns, violence, and bad deal. Can we, can you stop that?
Oh, if you wanna make a comment, absolutely.
That's the police captain.
I can make a comment if that's allowed. Yeah, absolutely. Sure. All these concerns that you have, we also have. We've expressed them in the past. There are gonna be new issues that are gonna be brought up. Currently, we only have Officer Wells, who's in the back, who's doing a great job in regulating and helping with the industry as it comes into the city. But there are an increase in the number of DUI arrests that we've done involving marijuana. We've had some concerns with the way the state laws are around and the confusion of how do you prove that the person was under the influence enough to be convicted of driving under the influence? Those are issues and concerns that we have, and we share them with you. We also have just one additional officer. Officer Chris Wells is doing that position right now in regards to all this marijuana that's coming into the community. So as we move forward and as the council chooses if we expand this, I mean, there might be a need for more resources. But as to how many and what we can do, it would be in coordination with the city.
So you're talking one or two officers that are dealing with this. I have a son that's gonna be coming onto the driving market. I don't think we should have a recreational marijuana. You smoke it at your house, you decide to leave to go eat some potato chips at McDonald's, you know, and then you're now, your private is now messing with me, with my family, or, you know? So that's my concern, is that once you leave your house, you're high for an hour, edibles can last hours and hours and hours, and then now your personal thing is affecting me. I don't affect you. So please, don't let people affect me.
Thank you very much.
I wonder if I can make a comment before you leave? I think it's very, just a comment, I think it's very important that we provide adequate resources to combat exactly what you say. I'm not a Pollyanna. I don't believe that all the problems go away when you say, "Okay, do recreational and don't do recreational." As many of people who oppose recreational pointed out, we've got 40% of the teenagers trying it already. And so if we got 40% of the teenagers trying it already, what do you think? How many adults do you think we have doing it already? I'm just curious.
These are all just weird numbers. You know, we talk about voting numbers. You say 57% voted yes?
Yes.
How many of those 57 have skin in this town? How many of them are owners or houses or renters?
That's in Hollister.
Because, yes, I understand that, but a rent, say, a renter or someone that's just here to make a quick profit and leave, and then we're left with the aftermath. You know, if you don't have any skin in the game, you can vote whatever you want, raise all the property taxes and so on, and then you leave and you go to the next town.
I think most of our residents are family people and working people. But that's not the issue. The issue is, if people are getting it now illegally, which I don't have any argument, they aren't, they certainly are as much hazard as anyone because we don't have recreational marijuana right now.
You say illegally.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't use marijuana, but I know people that do, and they do not get it from a guy on Fifth Street or on a corner somewhere. They all go, they get their edibles, their oils and everything from a dispensary, and then push it off. So how do, you know what I mean?
All right, thank you.
It's not coming from the, your regular dealers are gone. You know, it's all coming from these dispensaries, which are so-called medical or recreational, and it's getting pushed down the line. For a fact.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joshua Ong, and I'd like to talk on the topic of marijuana usage in the city. So I have a couple experience, I have an experience about the marijuana impacting people. So I personally have been impacted by it because our neighbors, sometimes they'll smoke marijuana in their backyard. If I want to go outside, I can't really because the marijuana, it can really affect our lungs. It can also affect the people in the area because I know a lot of our neighbors are also, have a lot of kids, and I think the marijuana could probably affect it. And sometimes kids at school, they'll pretend candy is like a drug. And if this, if marijuana is, becomes legal here, I don't know if they will, but sometime, maybe if they choose bad choices, they may think it's an okay thing to do, just because parents, their parents might be able to do it. They've already pretended it's something, they'll think it's okay and it won't affect them, but it will. And that's really my concern. I think that if we legalize it, a lot of kids are gonna try doing it, and it's not gonna end out very well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, young man.
Nicely done.
Can I ask how old you are, Joshua? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Elias Linas?
Good evening, mayors and council members. I too have been here since day one when this subject has started, so I've been coming up here for a few years. And I just want to state first, number one, I know that you all know what is going on, but I guess I want to say some statements so that the people that are watching it on the television understand what's going on. First of all, I believe that it is the adult's responsibility whether or not a child gets a hold of the liquor and gets a hold into the medicine cabinet. Personally, in my house, I did not drink from the time I was pregnant till my son went to high school, graduated high school, I'm sorry, went on to college. Then I went back to drinking wine, and now I drink beer. But that's my lifestyle, and that's why I choose, because I did not want to be a hypocrite and have liquor in the cabinet and have it in the refrigerator, and yet tell my son, "Don't do it." So it starts at home. It doesn't start in anybody else's responsibility, but your own child, you're responsible for them. So Prop 215, people keep saying that now that it's legal, now that it's legal, marijuana has been legal since 1996. Okay? What is now has happened is since Proposition 64, adult use is now being accepted. You had to go and you had to get a medical card, you had to say you had a broken nail, and you had a broken fingernail, and you would get it, and you would go get your supply. So that was just a way of going around it. There are 162 out of 482 municipalities, cities, and there are 24 out of 85 counties that have opted to allow commercial marijuana. So the numbers that were spoken to earlier were actually incorrect. And I was, it's very alarming, two things. The person that just spoke earlier, that he says that the product is going to, is getting from the dispensary and then from the dispensary, that there, it's going out there to children, that's illegal. And I believe that that person has a moral responsibility to do something about it and not just let people get away with doing something like that. So I would, I would also like to, on what Dr. Carrington was saying, that I have never heard that there is someone who is, has gone into a coma. This would be the first in the United States that I've ever heard about. So I'm very surprised that that doctor has not reported it to the CDC that that has happened, and also the psychosis that that's happening in our county. It would make national news. Also, with regards to law enforcement, the law enforcement goes to what's called the drug recognition, they're drug recognition experts. They all get, they get, I don't know if they, all of them do, I think the captain can, Reynoso can attest to that. How many of the officers are expert in the DRC, that comes, that DRE that come through to make sure that they know how to detect whether someone's under the influence of narcotic and/or alcohol? And another thing that I wanted to say, that there have actually been 46,000 kids that were actually surveyed, and it is a fact that medical use is down when it comes to the youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
Yes, I'd like to.
Yeah, please make your comments. We'll start from Councilmember.
Let me clarify that we're attempting to vote on this this evening.
Well, we are not, we're not voting on it. Does she have any questions or comments?
Nobody.
Please put them out there. If you don't, that's okay too.
Well, I feel like I owe you a comment, if you'd like to. I agree with you, kids and marijuana are not good. I strictly had a rule in my house, I didn't want them doing that when they were kids. And, you know, adults are adults. I'm not sitting here tonight considering kid usage for marijuana. I'm sitting here considering adult use, 21 and over. I think I feel confident that the dispensaries will have quite a bit of revenue tied up in their business, and I hope that they would never try to risk, I don't get the feeling they're gonna risk going to minors. Another thing, the prices in the dispensaries are not coming out and being resold. They couldn't do that. The dispensaries are very expensive. I do hope that the black market is somewhat quashed with legal usage. But again, I'm not, I've never been one to big brother adults. I'm just not. And the voters did pass it. Some of you think they didn't know what they were doing, but 57% said, "Yes, I have to take that into consideration." That we have an election process for a reason, and that the people did speak. But again, I never advocate for anybody under 21 being allowed to buy it. Parents need to watch their kids. I watched mine, and it wasn't always easy. I wanted to know where they were going and who the responsible adult was on site. My kids didn't get a lot of friends because I was like that. I know they weren't invited to some parties. But you can watch your kids, and you can smell that stuff. They're smoking it, you're gonna know it. It's not a sneaky drug. It stinks. I just want to say that I'm making decisions based on adult use. And that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember. Spencer?
I too do not want to see it get in the hands of students. I work at the high school. I've been there for 21 years. And in 21 years, I have watched kids get high every day. The one thing I want to make very clear, when I first started there, when a kid turned 18, it was, especially the males. I'm gonna go to a strip club. I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. When medical marijuana came, my 18-year-olds, male and female, I'm gonna go get a card to get high, and that's what they did. What we are proposing tonight is 21 and over. We have to go with what the voters voted on. I feel for all of you. I understand everything. I work with kids, and I have for 21 years. We have a problem at the high school, but that problem was the same thing when I was in high school, a long time ago, when my mother was in high school, even longer ago, and when my husband was in high school. You talked about violence and everything else. If this is legal for adults, 21 and over, the violence is gone. My husband, who had cancer, we had medical marijuana in our backyard. I don't know how many times on a Saturday I don't know how many times, on a Saturday morning, I had to get up and nail my fence back up because somebody broke into my backyard to steal my husband's medical marijuana. I just, I, I'm, that's all I have to say. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Richard?
Thank you, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep you a while. One of the reasons I came out and told you how, how I feel about it earlier today before we came here is because I don't think it's fair to you, since I had made up my mind not to let you know what that, my, my mind was. I just think that's fair. I'm gonna pull age on you, I've been around the block, okay? I mean, I, I joined the, I joined the US service when I was nineteen years old, and the first thing they did was dope me up. Every time we deployed, when I was in the Air Force, they would give me uppers. And every time I had to go to sleep, they'd give me downers. And no one gave you a prescription, and no one did an examination, and that was the flight surgeon who used to give it to you. I grew up and saw, uh, an entire generation of guys who smoked marijuana come through. It's in the sixties, every officer we had was, uh, every new lieutenant we had was a marijuana smoker. And you know, uh, most of them turned out just fine. And I will say one thing good about them, they didn't go down to the NCO club or, or the officers' club at night, get bombed and go out and start beating the hell out of each other. At least the marijuana smokers went to bed. That's the truth. I've never used it recreationally or, and I've never used it medically. My wife has used it medically for a short time when she was on chemotherapy for cancer. It didn't work for her, I understand it works for other people, so I'm not taking that from there. But I am telling you this, if forty percent of the people, of the kids are already using it, I assure you they're not getting it through legal means. It may be coming down legally through adults, but much of it is black market. And you know, whatever they're using, as bad as it is, you have no idea what's in those chemicals because the stuff they're buying on the black market, nobody's testing. The stuff they're buying on the black market is guarded by guys with shotguns. The stuff you're buying on the black market was made by people who are using illegal fertilizers, who are stealing water, who are polluting our water. And if you want somebody to be tough on them, I'm the first guy, if I had it within my power, I would make sure all these black market guys wound up in prison for fifty years. I don't have it within my power. But I do think, I look back at the record of the prohibition and see what happened when we tried to outlaw liquor. Did things get better? No, things got worse, because it was all under the table. And when it's all under the table, that's what people want to do, and by the way, that's what teenagers do. When they steal stuff, they steal cigarettes or they steal marijuana from their parents. And that's how most of us learned to smoke, by taking our parents' cigarettes, in my generation. They did it because the parents were irresponsible. And I had great parents, but they weren't taking care of their kids because they, they left their cigarettes laying around. So I know it's a tough call. That's why I propose not only, uh, legalizing it for, uh, adult, and I'm going to do that, but also I propose taking at least fifty percent of the money over what our cost is to do it, and to put it toward programs to discourage use and to, and to aid recovery. I mean, it is one thing, I want to prove to you, I don't want the money. I don't care about the money, okay? This is not about the money. But it is about letting adults be adults, and I can't be responsible for every parent. I would like to be, but I can't be responsible for every parent. We have to hold the parents accountable, we have to hold the kids accountable, and we have to realize that your kids are gonna make mistakes, they're gonna go out and drink and drive, now you know it. By the grace of God, I hope they, none of them ever get hurt. But the truth of the matter is, it's all about how you raise your children and how, how the society raises their children. And the children have to learn at some point in time, there's a difference between being a child and being an adult. And adults can do things, Charles cannot, and children are not supposed to do that. That's part of growing up, that's the way I see it. That's the way I grew up, I didn't always make the right choice. But I think most people sitting in this room went through teenage years, and they didn't always make the right choice. But most of you turned out just fine. And that's what's gonna be in this case. I don't want anybody to use it who doesn't deserve it. I think we have a thousand times more control over a couple of legal dispensaries than we have over some guy standing on a street corner. Or somebody who's totally irresponsible and goes in and buys a quart of vodka and comes out and gives it to some kid standing there with his hand out. We should be working against that, and I'm, I'm willing to take the money we get from this and fund, fund more, uh, fund more public safety. So, um, I hope to hear from you, if you disagree or agree, I don't care. Um, if you read, uh, I would like to hear from both sides, and, uh, my, uh, my email's available, and I thank you very much for letting me do a long speech on you. Thank you.
Councilor Lenora, send us.
All right, well, I just want to tell you guys that this is probably one of the hardest decisions I've been faced with since I've been up here on the council, that's the god honest truth. Um, I can see how passionate you are about the children, um, about protecting our children and the harm that this may cause in our community. Um, somebody, I think it was Ms. Whitehead, came up here, and she said that this is the legacy that we have to live with. Um, and that's, I, I would say a pretty, if this thing goes south, this is a pretty heavy burden or legacy to carry. Um, I can see how passionate you guys are about it, and more than anything, I think that I was, I had some questions regarding the process. I wanted to ensure that the public had a chance to be involved in the process. Um, I had some questions about when you guys would be opened and operating. Um, because again, it does seem a little bit, um, different, I would say, that everybody was for medical use, medical use, but then that never came to play, and now we're talking about increasing your revenue significantly, that's gonna impact your business. Um, I'm not really in a hurry, I'd like to see you guys operating, I'd like to see our staff operating with that. Um, also, I just think more than anything, like I said, I'm just, I think there's some great points that were brought up on both sides of the issue. I seriously can tell you that after tonight, I don't know where I'm gonna vote, which way I'm gonna vote. I'm glad to see that everybody came up here, and, um, I'm not really in a hurry, but when it comes to making that decision, then I will make that decision with a clear conscience and with, uh, what the voters and my constituents want more than anything. Um, but I'm not really that in a hurry after tonight. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate you coming out and taking, uh, part in the process. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bill, I, I have a few questions here, maybe you could help me here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe the attorney can help. We did have the discussion about twenty-one and over only, and state law allows for eighteen in medical. Is that something we're gonna be able to change, or is that not gonna happen because of state law?
Mr. Mayor, are you asking if we can limit the recreational to twenty-one and over?
No, the dispensaries from selling to anyone under twenty-one. Is that something we can do or look into?
At this point, everything with cannabis in the state of California is in flux. However, I don't think that we'll have any problem doing that pending a contrary decision by a court.
Okay.
I think that could be also handled in, uh, sort of the development agreement. I mean, I, I'm, I'm guessing, and I don't, I can't speak on their behalf, but if that's something that you want us to approach the dispensaries on, um, that could be a business decision and not necessarily a regulatory decision.
Well, I think we heard tonight that the, uh, those that are here are, are willing to do that. Other question I have for you is, if we do find a younger person that has marijuana on them, under twenty-one, is there a fine now for them, or what happens?
Do, the.
Get possession.
Do you want to do it, Chris?
To misdemeanour.
And before, as Chris is coming up, let me sort of address, uh, uh, Councilmember Lenora's question a little bit earlier about deliveries, um, and delivering to a house that may or may not have somebody that's over twenty-one. Um, so, I apologize, I'm, I'm not necessarily sure exactly what they call the machine, but it's essentially your driver's, the driver's license reader, swipe. Um, a lot of bars use them at the beginning of a door in order for them, the folk, those folks to get in. Um, when you've been out to that facility out on Shelton Drive, we probably didn't do it, but the machine is there, essentially the same thing would be portable, it would go out. Um, and the actual transaction of money does not occur until the person has been verified that he is over twenty-one. So there's not a, a transaction doesn't take place at the time of ordering, it has to take place at the time of, that's the California state law, and we would do exactly the same thing. And in fact, on the deliveries with dispensaries, that's part of our regulatory and our conditions, that would be one of the conditions to, to assure, uh, the council as much as possible that that's, that's being done.
So, sorry, Chris.
No. Um, for the under twenty-one cannabis possession right now, if you're over eighteen but you're under twenty-one, it's an infraction. It's a traffic ticket, it's like running a red light or a stop sign. You get a traffic ticket or the equivalent of a traffic ticket, and there's a fine, you end up going to court for it. Um, if you're under eighteen, that's handled through the juvenile probation department. There is, by state law, that you are required to attend a four-hour anti-drug class. Um, I don't know, I can't speak on behalf of probation whether that's actually occurring or not. I know that we have issued citations for both under eighteen-year-olds and eighteen, twenty-one-year-olds for the possession. Now, that's a little, little nugget to a couple ounces, it's an infraction, so.
Is that something that could become an administrative fine?
I'm sure we could enact a, 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 a resolution for that.
Because we're, you know, the issue, I think we all agree, and I think, um, Joshua Ong expressed it, you know, it's our young people, so we want to make sure this is not getting around, everybody's accepting it as, it's no big deal, everybody does it. It is a big deal. And I've said that from the very beginning of this whole conversation. So we have to look for ways to make sure that it's not just accepted just because it's out there. I think it's something we, we need to look into, see if that's possible. Not to punish people just as far as money, but to get a, a system in place to make sure there's a good education behind it. And that, that is very important, as Marty has talked about, some of that, the revenue.
We do have the curfew laws for the, the minors, um, we have the, the party host laws out there. I'm sure we could come up with something.
If we can look into that and make sure we're enforcing it and following through, because it's gonna play an important role, because if we don't do this right, we're, we are gonna suffer consequences. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Um, the other question I have, not the question, but one of the concerns I'm, I have is this nursery issue. Well, as long as it's so this tall and this and that, and then we shift it to the next room, all of a sudden, uh, the price goes up. I think we need to really clarify that and look at how we set that up, so if you're a nursery, you're a nursery. And you need to sell it, you need to sell it at a certain point to a cultivator, if you're a cultivator, you're a cultivator. I don't think it's a good idea to be mixing the two together to save a few bucks here and there.
We could come up with a distinct line.
If we could do that. Now, as far as my opinion on this, this is, uh, something that I've been involved here for over three years now, having these, these conversations. And tonight was a, a good example of the community still being passionate about this industry. And I, we had the conversation before that nobody really cares anymore. Well, no, people do care. I care, I know every council member here cares about it. My point from day one has always been, let's not play games with this, let's make sure we're doing it right. It's gonna become legal, it's gonna eventually become recreational. This was before it became recreational, and we had this nice, long argument about that. And I pointed this out, let's just be honest about it, so we craft an ordinance that we can work with as a community, pay attention to it, and make sure it doesn't take over our community. Those communities that did not pay attention to some of the rules early on failed and failed miserably, and ended up in lawsuits to try to clean up their mess. I never want it to be that, I want to make sure we're, we're doing things right from day one. I have toured the facilities in town here, I, I, I have to say they have done a very good job, following the rules and being very professional. I want to make sure we're gonna stay at that level and never just fall into this trap of, it'll bring us more money. Day one, I said this, we will never make money from this industry, don't kid yourselves. It's a commodity, and if we're not careful, it's a race to the bottom. There are several things we need to be working on to ensure that we don't lead the race to the bottom. The voters have spoken, that's, that's been clear. It's for us as the elected representatives to make sure we put the rules in place that help protect us and make sense of it, and not just get to the point of accepting and making excuses for each other. I'm gonna personally hold those that are in the business to a higher standard, and from what I've seen, they have done that themselves. So I, I have the confidence in what I've seen here in our community. I just want to make sure that we're gonna sort out some of these other issues first. I'm still a little upset about the six-hundred-foot deal in the past, the conversations, but that's a different conversation.
I'll give you four seventy-five.
But I think it's, it's important, and I, I can't thank all of you enough for coming out here and speaking up, because when you don't speak up, we start accepting it as everything will be okay. It's not, it's all of you here that are gonna make sure that you continue to speak up, so we never make the mistake of just accepting what's going on out there. Because personally, I don't think the state makes a lot of good decisions. That's a whole nother conversation too.
Mayor, I have a respectful request.
Yes, sir.
If I may. Um, we've heard what the council thought about recreational marijuana sales. Um, I think the community would love to hear what the council thinks about the other changes that were proposed here tonight. Thank you.
Well, I think that's, um, that will be at that next meeting, when we start to make that decision. I express my concerns or my views on some of those changes. I think some of them were explained very well. I have a major concern about the nursery, as I pointed out. I want to make sure the delivery, uh, system has worked out clearly. Those were my, my main issues. If anybody else wants to.
Can I, can I make, uh, just, uh, um, I too appreciate everybody coming and, and speaking, and one of the things, I think I'll, I'll still word from, from Roland that he may have stolen from somebody else about the legacy of this particular issue. Look, um, I gotta be honest with everybody in here, it, it's our names on this thing as well, as some, as the folks that are implementing it. And one of the things I will tell you is that, um, the, the rules that was originally adopted as part of the original ordinance and making sure that it can be easily converted to something that was adult in, at some point in the future clearly has happened, because as you noticed, we're not asking for a whole lot of changes, they're pretty minor. Likewise, I would say is that you should know as a community, um, that this ordinance is being used by lots of other cities, okay? It is being used as a template. And if you went to the facilities, and I know that it's not really feasible for everybody to go, I think you would understand that between all the folks that are part of the cannabis review committee and going out and doing the inspections, you'd be very, very proud to see what sort of bar we have set out there for people who are in the industry. AgriPharma and Hall's Holistics and Moshe's, and everybody are really, really top-notch, because we visited a couple of nice dispense, uh, of nice facilities in San Jose when we first started, and we all said that this is the bar that we want, and I think we've achieved that. Um, and, and just for this community, the last thing we want is for things to end up in kids' hands as well. Certainly, the council is not going to be making a decision based on the fact that they assume that something's gonna end up in youngsters' hands, that's not what we're doing here. So, please have, um, please thank you, uh, have some faith that we really want to do the right thing all the time. Um, we want to do, uh, the best job that we possibly can because we are being looked at constantly. Um, the state comes down, they're using us as an example as well. So, I want to thank everybody that's part of this whole process, because it has been fairly successful for the last few years. Even though you don't see a lot of activity, and that's partly why, is that we wanted to make sure that we were doing it correctly and making those folks that are in the industry go through onerous, um, uh, conditions that we wanted them to meet. So, I, that, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when we leave this room, that we are absolutely gonna make sure that we're doing the right thing when it comes to this.
Thank you very much. So again, thank you, all of you that came out tonight. If you do have questions, concerns, please contact any one of us, and we will get you the information you're looking for and making sure we are holding those standards. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion, there's a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, do we have students here tonight?